She's a blessing to have on the floor.
Awesome.
Barbara.
So I'd like to call the Planning Board, Newton Planning Board Public Hearing, starting at 7:00 on March 22, 2022. First thing I would like to take care of is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I could stand the place right here. And I apologize, this is the first time I'm leading this meeting, so it may be a little rough. And thankfully Jim gave me a cheat sheet, so I'm not going to go through this line. But we have a few organizational things to go through today prior to getting into the public hearings, because we have two new board members. We also have to vote on a, is that me or is that the Zoom? A Chair and a Vice Chair for the current year. So, at this point in time, from the Board, I would like to have nominations for Chair.
This is Barbara. I will nominate Dennis Moran for Chair.
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion on that? You want to have your roll, Jim?
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Awesome. And next for Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Barbara White. I second that.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
And Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay.
Awesome. And thank you, Jim.
Is there a third? Reaffirm the fee schedule? Is a motion, you need a motion to reaffirm the fee schedule?
Okay. Can I have a motion to reaffirm the fee schedule? My papers are definitely on board.
I'll make that motion, this is Barbara.
And that was Mr. Guide.
Jimmy.
That was Mr. Guide that seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
And Mr. Moran.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And then, for new board business, we have two meeting minutes we have to approve, February the 9th and February the 22nd. I'm going to approve them, or, you know, motion to approve them separately. So can I have a motion to approve the February 9th, 2022 minutes?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Second? Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
I'm staying.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
That's five in favor, one abstention.
And can I have a motion to approve the February 22nd?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
I'm staying.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
That's five in favor, one abstain.
And then, just the last item before we get to the public meetings, is the approval of the NEPR manifest.
It's in front of you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the NEPR manifest in the amount of $877.52. This is Barbara.
Now, second it.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
And Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Now that we're done with the board business, this is fairly packed agenda tonight.
Recording in progress.
So, in the interest of everybody's time, anything after 9:00 will be continued to the April 5th Planning Board Meeting, here, same time as usually scheduled. So the first order of business tonight is a continuation of the Savage and Diane, I'm going to botch your last name, and I apologize wherever you are. Mahahati request for the public hearing for a home-based business landscaping at 8 Nordic Wood Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 9, Block 3, Lot 159. This project, and I will give a quick overview, just because there's been a few changes on the Board, there's substantially more people in the audience tonight. This project was previously taken jurisdiction by the Newton Planning Board. Then, the Board conducted a site visit the following morning in the neighborhood to observe the conditions and the request by the applicant. Myself and Mr. Lavoy, I believe, were the only two people there. Mr. Marshon, you were not present, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'll give my take on the, what I observed that day. It's a residential neighborhood, I don't know, the road is probably 1,000 feet long with the cul-de-sac at the end. 8 Nordic Lane is on the eastern side, second, I'll say the second house to the end on the cul-de-sac, maybe the third house, depending on your opinion. A substantial driveway, probably 200 or 300 feet long, of a traditional colonial house. At the time of my visit, there were two trailers on the left-hand side of the driveway that were somewhat visible from the roadway. Mark, do you have anything else to add? No?
I would just, not just about that, but there seems to be some misinformation about that low-profile trailer that's out there. So I just want to put an end to that about the gross vehicle weight. I pulled up the specs on it in the, it's called the Big Tex 14 LP, which simply states that it's a 14-foot low-profile trailer, okay? So that trailer, empty, weighs less than a car. It weighs 4,180 pounds. It's called the 1400 because if you add the weight that it's supposed to be able to carry, which is 9,820 pounds, that weight added to its empty weight comes out to 14,000 pounds. So if that trailer is empty with nothing in it material-wise, it only weighs just over 4,000 pounds. So I just want to put that out there so that everybody knows.
Thank you, Mr. Marshon. And then, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up and speak about the update to your application. I do, just so everybody in the room is clear, I'm aware that there is a covenants in your neighborhood, and as discussed previously during this meeting, that the Planning Board has no jurisdiction whatsoever either way on your covenants. And we can't say, we can't consider it, just to put that out there. So that's a civil matter outside the jurisdiction of the Planning Board. So I prefer, just in the best interest of everybody's time, not to discuss that. But, so, thank you.
Thanks, Planning Board. My name's Michael Mahaladi. I'm the son of, you know, of C. Vas and Diane Mahaladi at 8 Nordic Wood Lane. I'll be very quick with my things. I'm a musician. This business is a part-time business for me. I started it when COVID started. I have a background in landscape, and I figured it'd be a good way for me to make a little more side income. In fact, as a musician, my band just landed our first big commercial spot with a NASCAR commercial. So that's something that I'm actively trying to do with my life. At the site visit, a neighbor brought up that we are already stockpiling materials there. They're referring to a pile of river rock that the previous homeowners purchased and installed in the front drip line of the house. I submitted photos of that to the Planning Board so they could see. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. We are not bringing materials to the lot, have no intention of doing that, and didn't do it. We suggested during the site visit a detached garage, and there's precedent on the street. There have been two homes that had modified covenants for detached garages. The neighbors didn't seem too excited about that, but we threw it out there. We submitted in the intervening time a revised site plan with the trailers behind the hill in the front of our property, which keeps them out of the sight of any abutters except for 10 Nordic Wood, and our offer to plant a larger mature view block trees there still stands. Since that time, we've remained aware that they've submitted a letter of objection, and I wanted to address all the points in there very briefly. The first point, my truck is the only commercial vehicle. I commute with it, it would not be parked there overnight, just the two trailers. They reference my Bobcat, that's not a vehicle, it's equipment. Two, we revised the site plan. They're no longer visible from the proposed old plans. Three, the zoning refers to GVW, not the GVWR, as mentioned, so my trailers are not overweight per Newton zoning clause. Four, there's no legal definition that I've come across yet that places my F-350 as a heavy commercial vehicle. Five, we can't, we simply can't afford a commercial property. It's a very small business, I don't have the means to go buy a commercial lot. The cheapest thing I found there is around $400,000. Six, my father, he's a 50% owner of the company, he helps with purchasing, he comes out actually on jobs and helps at 72, that's pretty good. He's materially part of the company, and the zoning allows for one non-resident, myself, to be the employee, the other employee there. Seven, looks like they reworded number three about the GVW, I'm not sure what they're trying to get at with that point. Eight, there are numerous other violations to the covenants that we've noticed on the street, but as stated, this is not the right venue for that. Nine, I did approach Mr. Gunderson, and he said he's not interested, and verbatim said he would not get involved. Ten, my driveway where I live is very steep and unsuitable to bring a trailer in or out, since they brought up where I live. Eleven, we're trying to be a legal entity. If we meant anything bad, we wouldn't have come to the town asking for a permit. You know, we're not up to anything illegal, and as stated, my trailers do not violate the zoning ordinance as it stands. Last week, someone came to our house, they trespassed on our property, they took photos of the front of our house. When I confronted them, said I'm going to call the police, they scurried off. Because of that, you know, my parents, we're considering selling because we're not used to living in such an unfriendly environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Roudin, do you have any input on the application?
Sure. Based on the revised plot plan that they supplied, it does not appear that there's anything on here, and with the detail in their original application, that would go against your home occupation ordinance.
Okay. At this time, I'm welcoming the public to speak, either for or against this project or application. I do ask that you state your name and your address when you approach the mic, so that our administrative assistant, Jim, Mr. Doggett, can record it. So, thank you.
My name is Wes Gunderson. I live on 19 Gavillage Road, which is, has border on Nordic Wood. I grew up in the neighborhood. My father did the subdivision, the covenants were put together, and I understand, he mentioned my name, and I wasn't involved, and I didn't realize that I was involved, or I should say, I wasn't involved when he came to my door, but since, and that's why I've come up, is since, my mother has delegated me to manage the covenants associated with that. And I guess the only condition here is that we don't have any say relative to the zoning board, other than it goes against the covenants that he didn't get it checked or verified even with my mother. The key being that we have to sue, is that, I guess that's the case to?
Do you want to?
So, the only matter to rectify if something is against your covenants is in civil court. It is not under the purview of this Planning Board or town zoning ordinance or code enforcement.
Okay, well, I'll just voice that he's going against the covenants at this point in time, and he mentioned my name, so I'm just coming up to say that I don't agree with his position. And I, the original covenants were set up specifically for that reason, to prevent this kind of effort. And therefore, that's why I'm up here, so, anyway.
Thank you.
My name's Ken Hamilton. I live at 13 Nordic Wood Lane. And we do have a few concerns related to the zoning. I guess first, the purpose stated in the zoning is that, its purpose is to maintain and preserve the character of residential neighborhoods. Our concern, I know you dismissed the 12,000 GVW commercial limit. In their application, they stated they're going to have two trailers, a subcompact tractor and a skid steer. They've since verbally said they're going to add to that a mini excavator, so that's five vehicles, two trailers, three vehicles. If that does not meet the threshold of commercial vehicles, what does? How many can they have? As many trailers? As many tractors? Can we all do that?
Is that a question to the Board or a question?
While preserving the character of residence, of the residential neighborhood.
Do you want to?
So, as far as limits on number of commercial vehicles, it is limited to two. The state definition of commercial vehicle does not include things that would be the size trailer, tractor, Bobcat, or mower that has been proposed. The only vehicles they would be allowed to have, as far as the landscaping business, are what have been proposed. Anything beyond that would be out of any approval that they may receive. So they could not have, say, a dump truck or a semi truck come to their property, that would be beyond means of any approval they would get under their home occupation that they've applied for.
Unless they amended their application, they've already had a mini excavator.
They did amend this application, but if the Planning Board chose to approve it, whatever the Planning Board may potentially approve this evening, that would be the extent. If they wanted to do more, they would have to come back before the Planning Board. You would be noticed in the same way that you were for this evening.
So I will state, for the record, that five landscaping vehicles to be used commercially is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And if that's one of the intents of the zoning, I would hope that the Board would take that into consideration. Further, Michael Maladi said that his father participates in the business. We don't know that, we can't prove that, but we do know he lives in Merrimack, Mass. And the zoning says, the home business must be conducted by the resident of the premises. Now, Michael Maladi living in Merrimack is going to be coming and going, which would violate another covenant, which is?
Excuse me, we?
Yep.
In the interest?
Not covenant, another zoning.
Okay. That's totally fine. I just really don't want to diverge to covenants, but?
No, zoning.
Relating to zoning, totally.
We're permitted. Section B, number three, the home-based business shall not be such that it requires regular or frequent service by heavy commercial trucks, since this would adversely impact the character of the neighborhood. If Michael lives in Merrimack and he's coming and going to use that equipment, that would violate that zoning condition. I'm not sure, under permitted uses, I'd ask for your interpretation. It says such use shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the residential use of the dwelling. Does this constitute incidental and secondary, having the five pieces of landscaping equipment? That's also in the zoning.
Are you asking the Board a question?
I'm asking, because I said it's not clear to me how to interpret that, but my interpretation is having those five landscaping vehicles there is not incidental to the residential use.
Okay.
And lastly, I guess they've redone their plan, but some of the neighbors have submitted pictures, and it is clear from 10 Nordic Wood Lane and 6 Nordic Wood Lane that they see right into that property. So again, maintain the character of the residential neighborhood, they can speak for themselves, but they did attach pictures from their front porch into that area where that pad is going to be, and they'll be staring right at it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole Tadaldi, and I live at 10 Nordic Wood Lane. As stated by my neighbor here, I am the only one that has the clear view of his property. Unfortunately, when the builder was building our lot, he cleared too many trees, so that was the reason for that. I wanted to also ask, what happens when his equipment needs to be serviced? There was a big truck that dropped off that Bobcat a few weeks back. What happens when it needs, you know, any type of things? How many trucks are going to be in the driveway while that's going on? So that's also impacting the neighborhood as well. And I wanted to find out, does the 12,000 GVR, or GVW, rather, is that for every piece of equipment? Doesn't matter, like, whether it's a Kubota, or whether it's a excavator, tractor? Is that, is that what the number is?
So the way the zoning reads is that any commercial vehicle or trailer exceeding 12,000 GVW, that is how the zoning reads.
Okay, so it's the, it's the vehicle?
It is the vehicle, by itself.
Okay. Thank you.
And to answer her question, though, I don't believe that if he had a problem with the Bobcat, that he would be able to have somebody work on it there, right? If it's a home business, he would have to have it taken out and worked somewhere else off of his property.
Correct. And the Planning Board could always put a restriction on the, any approval, just date as such.
Yeah, and that's very clear in our regulations, just so the public knows, that is a requirement. There, it's a, it states that the maintenance of vehicles cannot be performed on the premises. Or, let me rephrase that, in the open on the premises. Do I have any? The floor is yours, sir. Sorry. The floor is yours, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Kevin Clark in Beth, 6 Nordic Wood Lane. The question I have, it's been brought up, this is a residential neighborhood, and it's been well preserved over the years. What, what controls the, they submitted what equipment they have right now, what controls it down, down the road? They put more equipment, who controls that?
So, any approval that they may receive tonight, if they have put in the number of the trailers, the Kubota, the mower, that is what they are allowed to have. If they want to exceed it, if they want to change what they're doing, they have to come back before the Planning Board. If they are violating it, that is a code enforcement.
So they can put as many equipment as they go on over the years?
No, not without approval. If they?
Well, that's the rule.
If they were to do that, then a complaint could be filed by anyone?
That's the issue that we have here.
So?
This is a residential area, so we have to keep on coming back and forth to you and complain what we're complaining of?
You, you actually wouldn't come to us. You would go to, so say, say the application was denied tonight, and he's still doing it, you would not come back to us?
So who?
You would go back to code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Correct.
So how do we stop this, and if they continue to grow the business, which I would expect they would be growing the business over time? He seems to be a young, young and would grow the business. What stops them? I mean, they would, if they continue on and adding more equipment, pretty soon we will have a, we'll have a commercial backyard.
So?
This is what we want to, this, I understand he has a small equipment, but this will grow. You cannot say it won't. It might not, but you can't say it won't. And that's what we're concerned with.
So they would be approved, if they were approved this evening, for what they have been stated. If they were to grow beyond that, even by one vehicle, they would be in violation of their approval. They could be shut down by the code enforcement option, officer as an option.
And the residents have to submit that complaint then, right? We have to, we would have to submit that complaint.
A complaint can always be filed by any resident on any property in town.
We have to continue to monitor our residential neighborhood that we have kept up and maintained. If you go around and each shot, it's well-maintained. How are you going to, how is the code enforcement? This is not fair.
It's not the Board's purview for code enforcement. So if, like any other violation in town, if somebody, so if the applicant did not come in front of the Planning Board and continued, we never saw it, we would not be the place to voice that. And I understand that, that's not the perfect answer, but it, we don't, the Planning Board has no jurisdiction. So if the application gets denied, and he has three trailers there, or 12 dump trucks tomorrow, we would say, it appears that he has 12 dump trucks, and unfortunately, we don't have the jurisdiction to do anything.
That's.
So the code enforcement is, I believe, he is downstairs, and we?
And he works for the Select Board. So ultimately, the Select Board is who is in charge.
Ultimately, this is, as Ken has mentioned, this is a residential neighborhood. I think you're crossing the line here. You've been out to the property, it's well-maintained. It is our residential cul-de-sac, this is our neighborhood, and it's being encroached with commercial, and it's, it's just not right.
David Pugh?
7 Nordic Wood Lane. I was here last month, and I spoke a couple times. I just got a couple, three things. Michael lives in Merrimack, why, why isn't, why isn't equipment not stepped there? It's because it's covenants, and he's obeying those and disobeying our covenants. I know you don't want to talk about covenants, but I had, I had to say that. Couple of you guys did the site walk. Would you want to be living across the street from seeing trailers, seeing equipment all over your neighbor's house? I mean, I don't know where you guys live, but again, there's a mention of, what do you call it? Violations on the street? There's, there's been no viol, there's no proof of the violations. And I had one more of the thought, but I lost it. Oh, I, actually, someone mentioned on the site walk, best thing I heard about the site walk, when I showed up to it, was Michael's father. He came walking on. He said, his words were, "I'll flip this house if I don't, if I knew that 11 people on this street did not like what I'm doing." Those are the best words I heard in my life. I'm going to flip the house, sell it. Haven't seen a for sale sign yet, but I'm keeping the fingers crossed.
My name is Elizabeth Clark. I live at 6 Nordic Wood Lane. I'd just like to bring up one thing that I don't think has been brought up before. It is a quiet residential cul-de-sac neighborhood, and when you did the site walk, you didn't see this, and right now, the Mahaladi's haven't seen this, because it's not summertime yet, which I assume will be the landscaping's busiest season. There are nine young children on this street. I can only assume that the tractor, the Bobcat, and whatever else he's going to have is going to go on those trailers and back out of that driveway. going to go on those trailers and back out of that driveway. Where do we go when one kid gets hurt?
West Anderson again, on Gale Village Road 19, I bought her on Nordic Wood. I guess the thing that concerns me is that all the equipment, okay, he only has five pieces of equipment, and we have to monitor what he's doing relative to all the equipment he decides to bring on the property. The concern I have is they know they bought the property, and they know that there was a covenant on it. And the fact is that they didn't even really consider it at all as part of the neighborhood. They didn't consider it at all, they come straight to you guys without talking to anybody about the covenants that were part of, that have to be signed. And so what I guess is, if they're willing to do that, what kind of willingness are they going to do to put extra equipment on the property relative to, oh, we won't get caught, we can do it? And then next thing you know, the neighbors are having to complain about them, and there's nobody going around, you know, the code enforcement is not portraying or checking out all these different locations that are commercial properties that may be residential areas as well. And so there's really nobody keeping a check on them, and he's already scoffing at the covenants, which to me says that they're not necessarily going to be, they're going to necessarily be scoffing at the zoning laws as well. And that's my opinion, but if they're not willing, when they bought it, they signed into the covenants, so they knew what they were, and here they are trying to go against the covenants without even talking to the people that are involved and they're supposed to talk to with their plans and what they want to do. And so that's what I just wanted to bring it up.
I'm Jessica Carey, I live at number nine. In reference to their picture that they sent that was amended, the day after they posted the picture, the stuff was right back in the yard again. And also, this woman's a real estate agent, she should be well aware of how a covenant works, even though we're not discussing covenants. I mean, she's a real estate agent, she deals with this stuff. This isn't, this is so wrong in every way. The stuff was right back in the driveway the next day. Nicole, I picked her up tonight and took a picture off her front porch looking at the big orange Kubota, because she's the one that gets it the worst. This is wrong. You have 11 houses on the street, and 10 of us are here tonight. It's wrong. They already had the stuff here before even seeing if they could have it, before filing the application. The stuff's already been there since they moved in in January. I mean, it's shady, between her being a real estate agent, the stuff being there for two months before the application's even passed. I don't... I'm sorry?
Don't.
It's just ridiculous.
The last thing that I want to point out here, during the sidewalk, I went over to the applicant's mother, shook her hand, introduced myself, and we talked for a little bit. And I asked her flat out, I said, "Did you have to sign anything at the closing costs?" She said no. She lied to my face. So I really think that that is important thing, piece of information, to speak about the integrity of somebody here. So what, you know, is there anything that we can prevent in these ordinances from people doing things after the fact? The only reason that they came here is because Mary Jo told them that they needed to come here first before they could register their vehicles. So, and also, I also want to reiterate what Dave had said, nobody is in violation of anything on the street, including my husband's business, that we were here 10 years ago, 11 years ago actually, and got permission for one van at the time, now we have two. Thank you.
I'm Diane Mahaladi, I live at 8 Nordic Wood Road. First of all, we did not sign anything. We included a picture in our objection letter. Of the warranty deed? I saw that after the fact, okay? I'm not licensed in this state, and we saw it after the fact, okay? So you can make all the smirks you want, all right?
And ask that you direct the comments towards the board, please.
Just as they were about me, okay?
Absolutely.
All right. As said at the previous meeting, when we drove down the street before we purchased the house, we made an inaccurate assumption, one about a Bobcat that was parked across the street. They said that it was there in their driveway to fix a pool during, you know, the months of December and January. But also, next to us, there is someone with a plumbing business. In their yard are wooden pallets stacked up, there are plumbing vans. There's also, it looks like pavers or something, maybe they're working to put some type of pavers in their yard, which they're more entitled to. But seeing that equipment, seeing some sort of mixer, to me, does not keep the character of the neighborhood that has been so described by several people. I know we're not supposed to speak about the covenant, but I will say this, I think that if the covenant's going to be enforced, it should be enforced fairly, okay? So far, everybody is talking about trailers and businesses. There are other things in that covenant, when we drove down the road, that are in clear violation of the covenant, which are?
And again...
No, okay, all right, then I won't.
Thank you, and not just to you, to the audience as well, please, do you have a comment? Please come up to the podium after she is done, thank you.
And the other thing is, as my son stated, this is a part-time business. And I know that we are bound by whatever equipment was listed if it should so get approved. But for people to make assumptions, and we've heard this, that we're trying to cause, we're trying to create a landscaping depot on this street is just inaccurate, totally inaccurate. And that's all I have to say. Oh, and about my son and his neighborhood, he does, he has a very steep hole, I mean, driveway and backyard where he cannot go in and out. And in that particular neighborhood, like this neighborhood, you know, even offices of the law break the covenant, but they manage to get along, not that that matters, but they manage to act in a civil manner, which unfortunately is totally lacking in this neighborhood. And to the gentleman that says he can't wait to see a for sale sign on our house, I think you're just really rude. Thank you.
I'm Sehwa Mahaladi, Michael's father. As I said last time, I've bent backwards to accommodate. We moved the trailers behind the hill, if a little bit of it is showing, we've added more hill. Couple of people have requested and was granted the external garages. We can build a couple of them there, and in the back, so we can put the trailers in there. But most importantly, I don't want to live in a neighborhood that nobody showed up with greetings, when you say to them hello, they don't answer. And frankly, I will promise you, I'll get the hell out of this neighborhood as soon as I can. That's my plan, I commit to you that in less than one year, but I'm not going to be chased out of the neighborhood with these attitudes. So I will commit that we are not going to increase the equipment, we are not going to make repairs, we're not going to bring material on the site, I can write you all of this and sign it, and we just need a break. We came here, we made a mistake, we saw all the equipment, we saw plumbers, we saw everything. We people, two landscapers, we saw the equipment, we made a mistake. We don't need to be treated like this. We are sorry, we'll sell the house and go, but we need time. We have no place to put our equipment, so this is a temporary arrangement. You guys know to be off in arms, have a great day. Thank you very much.
Hi, Glenn Schroeder, 12 Nordic Wood Lane. I'd just like to address the comment made about the plumbing resident who lives next door to me. The cement mixer and the pallet that was mentioned, that has nothing to do with the plumbing business. The gentleman is building a stone wall on his property, and it's just there for that reason. But like my neighbors, I'm concerned about the character of the neighborhood. It's a very nice residential neighborhood, as was mentioned, it's well maintained, and I'm worried about my property value. As you guys may know, the Gale Village Road is not in really good shape. I think additional commercial traffic up and down that road is just going to make matters worse there, and I'm worried about the maintenance and the wear and tear on the neighborhood and what it'll do to our property values. We're being taxed at a rate commensurate with a good residential neighborhood, and I'd like to see it stay that way. Thank you.
My name is Josh, I'm at 3 Nordic Wood Lane.
Sorry, Josh, your last name?
Hansstrom.
Thank you.
Thanks. My concern is that, you know, I'm not sure if his father is actually on the LLC or not. I'm not sure if he's part owner or not. But I can't wrap my head around why the board would accept someone essentially using commercial space in a residential area for a business with a person who doesn't even live in the town. I can't wrap my head around that. So I'm not sure what the legality is that, on if he's part of the LLC or not, but I can almost assure you that he's not actively participating in that business as far as working within it. He may be funding it, I'm not sure. But this person owning this business does not even live in the town of Newton, so I can't wrap my head around why would we allow that to happen in a residential area. Thank you.
Ken Hamilton, 13 Nordic Wood. I asked the question, but I don't think I got an answer, and I'm not sure if there is one. What is the limit on the number of non-commercial commercial vehicles that somebody can have? If they had put 10 in their application, would that have exceeded some threshold?
You can have, if it's not a commercial vehicle, you could fill your, as long as they're registered, you can have 600.
However, you're limited to maybe two project cars?
Right. I think they have to be registered, do you know if it's registered or?
Com...
If they're non-commercial, there is...
Non-commercial still have to be plated and registered, doesn't mean that they are rated as commercial.
But...
I know everyone's hanging on the technical definition, it's even a federal definition of what is a commercial vehicle. I doubt that that was the spirit of the intent, because commercial is based on where commerce, those vehicles are being used in commerce. They're not private use, they're being used in commerce.
Are you talking about the equipment or the vehicles?
Two commercial vehicles, all right? Further, my next door neighbor owns a farm supply business. He has 28-foot drive-in trailers, and he has 53-foot drive-in trailers. The curb weight of the 28-footers are about 9,000 pounds. Can he start bringing home 20-foot trailers and parking them in his front yard, because they're not commercial? They carry 40,000 pounds, but their curb weight's only 9,000. Can he start parking 28-foot trailers in his front yard? Yeah?
The way it's written.
That's awful.
I...
Where's the hard line? Where's the hard...
If you...
Because a trailer doesn't have any weight on it.
You really need to get to the podium, but...
I'm sorry.
And to answer and address your question, if the public has a concern about the regulations, there's a very defined way to change them.
So the reason why trailers are not considered vehicles, as stated in the motor vehicles 259, semicolon, 113, a trailer shall mean any vehicle without a motor powered, designed for carrying property or passengers wholly on its own structure, and for being drawn by a self-propelled vehicle, except those running exclusively on snow or stationary tracks and vehicles, and exclusively for agricultural purposes. That's why they are not considered a motor vehicle, and that's why, unfortunately, what we're doing is we're talking apples and oranges, so we're talking morality, and we're talking what is in the law by technicality, is what's going on here.
I read that as well. Even a backhoe isn't considered commercial by that definition, because it's not used to transport people, right? So I don't even know what the point of the application is, they can have anything they want. That's basically what the board is telling us. They can have whatever they want, as long as it's not a self-powered vehicle designed to carry, transport people.
Only if it's granted, like...
But what I'm hearing is there are no limits.
No, there is. When people come before the board, we put stipulations on things. When you people come, you express, not only you, but we've done it in the past, other residents have come in and they've had issues about things that are going on, we take that all into consideration, and to try to help to protect the residents that would be around a business like this, we would sit here and we would talk about putting the limitations, what he put in for his trailers. That would be in black and white, okay? The fact that he would have to keep them away from your property at a certain distance could be put into the property, that he, the woman that is looking right at his Bobcat, that he, like he had stated, would put up some trees or something, so that there could be a natural barrier to where she wouldn't have to look at that, and it would be more scenic to where she would have trees to be looking at, birds would be, could be in the trees, whatever. But we could put these type of stipulations in to help protect what you're looking at. But then, like what we've talked about, is that that's our limitation. We are not here to enforce these things. That has to be done by the ordinances, right? By the zoning. So you would have to, if he was out of line, you would have to go downstairs, file a complaint, that complaint would be followed up, looked at, and if it was, then he would start to get fined until said issues were corrected. And that's what we're dealing with here. Like I said, it's the morality of your covenant and whatever, which we have no jurisdiction over. So if you really wanted to enforce that, you would have to, like Jen said, go to a court of law and deal with it that way. Or we could do, like we do, take into consideration everything you said, and unfortunately, by the letter of the law, what he's trying to do technically is in the ordinances. But we could put stipulations in, like I said, to help with what you want to deal with.
Yeah, my question was more of a general one, because again, there are other people who have businesses on that street. So there's technically no limit, it's up to the board's purview?
I get, say they came in and said, "We want 75," you know, obscene number, "we have 25 Bobcats." We would probably look at each other and say, "That's a little obscene for a one-person landscaping company." If it's, you know, one, that's a more reasonable home operation landscape company. Or like a plumbing company, I'll pick them, sorry if you're the plumber. If you had 12 vehicles, or you were getting deliveries every day, it's, and on previous applications, we typically ask, "Well, how many deliveries are you getting a day? Is it an Amazon vehicle restocking you? Or is it, you know, Staples coming four times a week, where it would be potentially detrimental to the neighborhood when it's not a, you know, something that could change it?" So that's, that's the board's jurisdiction to... So that's, that's the board's jurisdiction to, it doesn't generally comply with our ordinance. And, you know, there's basically three things that we are, can you help me out on this? What we're looking at for home-based businesses and--
You're effectively looking at scale, intensity, and impact.
Thank you.
And those are sometimes a little bit subjective. But is it out of line with what the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zoning ordinance actually states? That's what the planning board has the ability to judge on, besides the explicit criteria within here.
So it is subjective. And I will just make one, reiterate one point, which is, it is in the zoning that the resident must conduct the business, not own, it says "conduct," an active participant. So the sun coming and going from Merrimack, from my perspective, does violate the zoning regulations, but I guess the board will ultimately decide that. Thanks.
Jacqueline Morrison at 11 Nordic Wood. I was here last month.
Thank you.
Hello. So I just wanted to state for the record that I think this is a safety issue, and three little kids. My son's going to be, he just turned five, he's going to be going to kindergarten, we have to walk to the end of the street every day to get the bus. Now we're going to be having trailers on our lovely cul-de-sac road, up and down every day, multiple times a day. I mean, would you guys want that? Three little kids, you buy a house on a cul-de-sac to raise your family? No? Nobody can tell me? Mr. Malahati here, that lives in Merrimack, Mass, that said somebody's taking photos of his parents' house, I don't know who that was, drove around after your lovely sidewalk and took pictures of everyone's house, including mine, while we were outside. So, just for the record, I think that, you know, they set the tone for this. Thank you.
David Pugh again, from 7 Nordic Wood Lane. Just want to mention two things I brought up about the violations, and it was addressed. I mean, I guess you can't do DUI home projects anymore. Nicole and Anthony have a cement mixer, they're fixing a retaining wall. Okay, it might take you a little while, whatever, they're fixing it. I don't think a cement mixer is a violation. My next-door neighbor, Jess, she's putting a built-in pool by herself in her boyfriend Bobcat. They started it, I believe, in November. Can't do too much work, they got a lot done, you can't do too much work in the winter months, build digging and all that. So yes, it's in their driveway, that's not a violation to me. So again, they mentioned the violations, I guess you can't have pavers in your yard because you're fixing something. Pallets, well, the pavers probably came on the pallets. And they also has arrogance. I don't think anyone has shown arrogance in the past two months, the past two meetings. It's just neighbors are showing what their passion about keeping the street as a residential. So again, I think violations and arrogance, I don't think we've seen any of that.
Ashley Sunstrom, 3 Nordic Wood Lane. Before any zoning issue, whatever, how are we going to keep the neighborhood safe? How are we going to keep the kids safe? How are we going to keep the pets safe? This is going to be bringing a lot more equipment, a lot of people that don't live in the neighborhood dropping off equipment, bringing equipment in, people we don't know, people coming into our neighborhood that don't belong there. We need, bottom line, to keep our families, our pets, and our children safe. We bought homes in a cul-de-sac in a safe, quiet neighborhood for a reason. Now put yourself in our shoes. We're just trying to keep our families and our pets safe and protected, without any laws or zoning. This is why we bought in the neighborhood that we bought in.
Anybody else from the public applicant, do you want to have any closing words?
Sorry, I had ACL surgery, my knee's still a little bit wobbly. Yeah, as far as the nature of the street, we have another home-based business next to us, a plumber. They have building materials out, you're not supposed to per the covenant, whatever, not your business. These people are worried about me driving a trailer, my truck head into the driveway, doing a three-point turn on our property, and driving head out. I have pretty good visibility in my truck, probably better than a contractor's van. Haven't hit a kid yet, been servicing subdivisions. I have a hard time to believe all of a sudden I'm going to run over children. They don't seem to be worried about Amazon drivers speeding up and down the road, or what have you. So I just, I don't buy it. Thank you.
This kid lives in Massachusetts. He does not live in our town, in our state. The father is not actively, he's not out there landscaping every day, I'm pretty sure of that. This kid doesn't even live in our state, and he's coming and invading our street. This is ridiculous. Let him go in his band, like this is ridiculous. This is our street, we've lived here. Some of us have been here for how many years? Honestly, this kid doesn't even live in New Hampshire. This isn't like a commercial street, where people come from all over and work. This is our neighborhood. It's so ridiculous.
Ms. Ratten, do you have any--
My name is Kevin Clark, 6 Nordic. I can attest to there are lots of children on the street. But I just want to end my comments, is what is the planning board is to protect us in terms of what types of property are on there? The planning board? What exactly is your role here?
So we can, if this gets approved, we can put stipulations and conditions that the applicant can have one vehicle, two trailers, one Kubota BX series, one Bobcat, and limited to that, we could do, and then we have boil, I'll call them boilerplate conditions, and that includes like no servicing the equipment, which is part of the regulations. Also, that it must meet all other regulations, including approval by the fire department, and I'm missing a few other boiler terms, but I think I hit most of them. But we, or we could limit that or add to that. You know, sometimes if it's a home-based business, there's, which this was not discussed tonight or previously, hours of operation, when vehicles can start, cannot start, visitors come and go. But we can only put conditions on an approval and leave it at that. And then once we approve it or deny it, either way, it's not under our purview after it leaves this floor.
But as pointed out, this is a residential neighborhood. I know it's been repeated several times. You are controlling this, you're going to make a decision, yes or no. This is our neighborhood, and you have that responsibility as well, the way I see it.
So that's similar to just about every single home-based business application--
Well, we, I don't know why you have that, I mean, I understand homemade business and that's right, but this is, has a lot of different pieces of equipment. It can grow, it's not like one van or one pickup truck. This is several pieces of equipment. And I'm concerned with the business growing, taking up more space, and look, it takes away the, what this area is.
So to that point, and I guess I'll reiterate it, if we approve one piece of equipment, it is held at one piece of equipment. And then they would have to come back here again, and then we would say either yes or no, you cannot, you can get another piece of equipment that's commercially registered.
Yeah, but now--
But there is, I understand your comment.
This is great, like as Jess has pointed out, this is, we have this gentleman that lives in the next town over, his next state over, and he doesn't even live here. I know his dad is here, but he's not part of the business, I don't see him long-term here, but this is not right at all. And we're pretty sad, we are, we're upset, we are--
Excuse me, can you please address the board again?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We're not trying to be mean here, we have been put into a position here, that that's why we're upset. Anyways.
Thank you. I have one question for the applicant. For this to move forward, do you need every piece of equipment you've listed on your application to be approved? As in two trailers, Bobcats could steer, and your personal vehicle or your commercial vehicle?
Well, yeah, and I mean, it's, the thing that I'm kind of getting sort of confused here is that I have one truck, I can tow one trailer at a time, right? I can't go up and down the road with two trailers at once, I don't have two trucks. If I come and go for a thing, remember, this is part-time, it's not coming in daily. If I go have my machine serviced, I drive it down the road to MB Tractor on my trailer. You know, I do need the two trailers, I need the Bobcat, I don't really need the little subcompact tractor, I can take that out of there, I can take that to my property and use it personally. You know, that was my starting piece of machine. Yeah, that answers.
That answers my question, thank you. Jen, Ms. Ratten, sorry, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, this is more general for the board's consideration. So one of your roles is to ensure when applications come before you, whether they are following the zoning, in some cases, site plan subdivision regulation. Your role is to ensure that property owners' rights are balanced with neighbors' rights, so it goes both ways. So I just, that's as a general. I do have some draft conditions of approval, if you guys wanted to consider them, that I can read out, if that would be useful. All right. That the business must be conducted by a member of the household, that's one of your regulations, but just to reiterate it. That there shall be no servicing of vehicles used by the home-based business at the premises. That the vehicles allowed are limited to those presented in the application, so that would be the trailers, the Bobcat, and the Kubota. No outside storage of material is allowed on-site, and all necessary local, state, and federal permits are obtained. I don't know that there are any applicable in this particular case, but just as a general condition. That's a general condition you guys have had.
In regards to safety of children, are, if we were to input sort of hours of operation for them to be leaving the property and coming back in, is there a time of day that the kids are usually playing at on the street? I would assume after school or before school? Or is it all day?
All day.
Okay.
We have kids all--
It's like the street, there's room for kids.
So they need to come up.
Yeah.
But the hours of operation on the application are nine to five.
Nine to five, right.
Thank you.
We have children ranging from newborns to 17, 18, like on the street. And there's more than nine, I think, so nine to five, that's great during summer. I mean, everybody's out in the cul-de-sac, riding their bikes, it's a good time. I don't think that's, I mean, some of them aren't even in school yet, so they could, you know what I mean, be outside at any time all year. My kids are on the older end, and I still think that it's an issue.
The other thing too, is why the need for both tractors? He's saying he can only trail one at a time, why would we need two? Who else is going to be coming and picking up the other tractor to trail other things that works for him? Who are the people that are going to be coming to our neighborhood to pick up equipment, to trail other things, to take them out of the neighborhood? I just don't believe that he's the only one trailing these trailers or coming back and forth, if he's running a construction company that needs two trailers, a Kubota, and all this other equipment. There's got to be other people trailing these things back and forth. And that goes against all rules right there. They don't live in the building, they don't own the building, they don't even own the company, but there's still going to be trailing equipment back and forth from our properties.
Yeah, I need to address the, having people show up, first of all, in the ordinance that allows one occupant and one non-resident, that's me, right? There's no one else, no other employees. Co-owner, co-owner of the company, that's it. We don't have employees. And as I said, it's a part-time business. I don't have a crew, I don't have other people with trucks coming to take my trailer. It's what is listed in the, you know, the plan. Thank you. Yeah, and I'll clarify too, that the two trailers, one's an equipment trailer, you just put equipment on it, the other's a dump trailer, you might go take it to go dump brush or something. They're two different purposes, why you might have each trailer. Thank you.
I don't know if your mic is on, Mark.
Oh, it's not?
Down now it is.
It says it is.
Yeah, I'm making things up. Okay, I'd like to close the public comment at this time. Thank you for everybody's input. Does the board have anything to discuss?
The only thing I would put on there before it comes to a vote is, what Jen put on there is what that other woman wanted, that natural barrier, as a stipulation, so that she didn't have to look at the vehicles.
The shrubbery? That can certainly be a condition of approval.
Is there a limit to a number of employees?
Yes.
That's the limit?
Yes.
On or off the books?
You'll have to ask the chair.
Well, so is this saying that the equipment is going to be out of sight? I mean, because it sounds like you're passing it.
I can't say either way.
Well, I'm just saying, like, if Nicole's going to come to her front door, like when I went to her front door to pick her up tonight, boom, it's right there. Like, is this, are you saying, like, put this in natural barrier, this equipment's going to be kept out there?
Before we vote on anything, we have to make sure that it's complete. And that's what we're voting on, so that's what we're doing. We're just putting it together, so we have something to look at, what we're voting on.
All right. I mean, they have a two-car garage, so them, like, it sounds like they're planning on building another garage. So to me, that sounds like it's growing, and they want to, I mean, they're going to add a detached garage now to hold equipment? It sounds like to me--
Which--
Why would you dump that money if you want to get out of, get out of the street so bad? Do you know, I mean, why would you build a detached garage to hide the equipment?
Again, they would have to come back here to be able to do that.
It just sounds like a little fishy, just saying.
So to the effect of the screening, I would recommend the condition be that the equipment be stored as indicated on their revised plot plan, and that, and you can talk about the number, but that year-round greenery or fencing be provided in between the vantage point to the closest residence, which is the one, the next-door neighbor.
Number 10, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have a, and I apologize for my ignorance, do we have a height limit on fence in Newton? Is it seven feet or eight feet?
There's no chain link to it, it's just a--
Anything above six feet in New Hampshire is considered a spite fence. So a standard stockade fence would be permitted?
Anybody got anything else from the board?
Dennis, just first, since you have new members. So at this point, the planning board has taken jurisdiction of this application at the last meeting. From that date, you have 65 days to approve, deny, or do a conditional approval. So when I was giving some suggested conditions of approval, those are for your consideration if you wanted to go with an approval. If you choose to do a denial, it has to have a reason with it, and a justification, as to why you're denying the application, so that the applicants and any butters are also aware of why they are being denied, so.
And to provide additional clarity to Ms. Ratten's statement, it has to be denied according to our regulations.
Correct.
So we have to cite a stipulation in our regulations of why the project was denied. And-- And... Yeah, so...
I'll make a motion to discuss conditions.
Do you want me to read the list I had put together for you? That the home-based business must be conducted...
Well, I, do ahead.
You don't have to have a motion to discuss that.
Go to the floor, it's all yours. You can kind of talk for, are you proposing an additional?
No, a recap.
Sorry, what was that?
A recap.
Oh, recap.
So, do you want me to read, do you want me to read through all of them?
Please.
Okay. That the business must be conducted by a member of the household. That no servicing of vehicles associated with the business shall be serviced on-site. The vehicles allowed are limited to those presented in the application. Although, you may want to do vehicles and equipment allowed are limited to those presented in the application. No outside storage of material on-site is allowed. All necessary local, state, and federal permits are obtained, and that the equipment shall be shielded from the neighboring residents and stored in the location indicated on the application. So, that would be the revised plot plan they submitted.
They'll be remembered on the notice of decision.
And the hours of operation presented in their application would remain as nine to five, if you wanted to put that as well?
Yeah.
For the board's consideration for conditions, what are our thoughts on reducing the amount of equipment to one piece of equipment in one trailer at a time? To...
As in storage?
Storage or on-premises at a time.
I would support that. Yeah, let's add that.
So, to limit it so that there could be only one piece of equipment and one trailer at any allowed time?
That's exclusive of their primary mode of transportation. Their truck, or, you know, if it's a van, pickup truck.
So, limit, limit one piece of equipment and one trailer. That would, that would be exclusive of a vehicle.
And I'm trying to condition this in my head right now to limit the, in similar size and nature of the equipment proposed?
I would just limit it to what...
To one?
To what was presented as the options, if you're going to go back.
One Skid steer or one small tractor? Or the model, I would hate to put the model number in there, but...
I think we need to get specific.
Okay.
Mr. Chen, are you referring to stored outside of the dwelling, outside of the garage?
Correct, because we have no jurisdiction of equipment stored inside the garage.
I was just going to say.
Yes, sorry. Of a piece of equipment or trailer and, I should, piece of equipment and trailer stored outside a premises, or outside a structure.
So, the limit of one trailer and one piece of equipment to be allowed to be stored outside. All other equipment as part of the application must be stored inside or off premises.
Correct.
Is that the intent, at least?
That was the intent of that, because it's my understanding that we do not have the authority to limit the storage of vehicles inside a structure. But we can't condition for it, I should say.
Can I, can I recommend you at least, the applicant, if that is even...
I'd be happy with the two trailers outside and the Bobcat or a garage. So, effectively, two things. The trailers don't fit in the garage, they're two.
At this point, we could just say two trailers only, no equipment. I mean, if that's what he's saying, that's what we could say. It's two trailers only, no equipment visible, or outside. Stored outside. That's right.
You have to go to the...
Do I, do you call cops every day? Or is it that?
But don't come back here.
The code enforcer.
Yeah, let's just do that. That's fine. If they can't store the trailers, it's two pieces of equipment, and can we, can we include language that limits it to the trailers, period? And refer to them by name?
You could say that the only outside equipment to be allowed are two, the two trailers presented...
Two trailers named in the application.
To be stored in the location as indicated on the application.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'm going to get more specific, too, and I forget your last name, Nicole. And this is something untraditional. Is there a specific type of screening? Can we, are you more interested in a fence? Are you more interested in a tree? Are you more...
Yeah, I would, I would not prefer a fence.
You would prefer a natural screening?
Yeah.
So, we'll put that in.
Thank you. So, a natural screening that is, limits the visual impact to the abutter?
The equipment, in this case, the trailer, shall be shielded from neighboring properties with year-round natural screening.
Perfect.
Perfect. I really want to do something about the kids and, like, safety, but I don't think that we have any jurisdiction on...
It's a public road.
Yeah.
So...
That's my number-one concern, guys, too. And, and, and there's not, but there's nothing that we, like, really can put in, because it's a public road. So, and that's why I was trying to talk about hours, because if we limit those hours to when the kids are in school or something like, I'm just trying to figure out what we could do in there to make it safer, so. Trying to think of everything we can.
But our men and women are blue are great. Sure.
Yes.
Gosh, you know, we're late. My biggest takeaway from this here is that, and you mentioned that this is not the form to discuss, is that there's no such thing as a commercial vehicle underneath what we have talked about here. So, essentially, you could have, as long as it's under 14,000 pounds, I mean, you could have a 40-foot vehicle and have multiple of them here. So, where's the line on commercial vehicle versus non-commercial? That...
I want to take that generally.
I checked the town clerk. Anything over 26,000...
26,000 GBW? Did I get that correct? I don't want to get that...
And that's curb weight.
Curb weight. So, anything...
Automatically, it's a commercial vehicle. Anything under that can actually be...
With the exception of RVs, I think, is the...
Excuse me?
With the exception of recreational vehicles, I believe, because you don't need a CDL to drive a recreational vehicle. But that is a general correct statement, that the regulations in the town of Newton, I'll say that they're open, or there's a lot of freedom.
Interpretation?
Yes.
Actually, that is state.
And they're from the state?
Yeah.
Oh, for the vehicles?
Your, your regulations do not cite the state definition. The state definition is the 26,000.
Not that I can picture anybody driving a dump truck, but...
Do we want to...
You have to ask him.
Is the business hours Mondays and Fridays?
The application does not indicate any specific days.
The applicant, is it Monday through Friday?
Uh, Monday, Friday, including Saturday.
So, not Sundays?
No, not Sundays. And, you know, I generally leave for work around 6:00 in the morning to go commute somewhere. I don't know when the kids are playing out at 6:00 in the morning or after sunset when I go home from day work, so, you know, it doesn't have to be nine to five. It could be earlier to get out of the neighborhood. Maybe that'd be a little palatable.
Yeah, I was going to say, doesn't 6:00 AM violate? Yeah. So, we would need to change the hours if you're going to do that.
Would the hours of operation for you of 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
No, no, that's not correct. I was just trying to accommodate and say that I'm willing to be less.
Okay, because...
That's all the point.
Because the way this is written right now, unless the planning board changes it, your hours of operation would be nine to five. That would be what would be allowed, because that's what you put in your application.
But that doesn't mean he can't leave earlier.
Well, when I, when I...
He's not actually in business until he shows up to the job. He's not in business when he leaves. I don't, you don't start work when you get in your car to drive to work, right? So, some people do, but...
I do.
This is a landscaping business.
I would say, I think that for the purposes of here and for being good neighbors, the hours of operation start when you leave your house.
Exactly.
So...
So, that, that's why my question of...
I think that's how we have to consider it as a board.
Yeah.
That's, yes.
As soon as you fire up the engine, that is the start of your, of you with your job. So, I think for the purposes of leaving your house, if he wants to leave at 6:00 AM, we've got to make sure that that's in the application.
Correct.
Okay, great. So, let's just get that clear. In terms of when you come, it's a question for the applicant, in terms of when you come home typically for your business, when, when is that usually?
Generally, around 6:30 or 7:00.
Okay.
It varies. It depends on the day. I might have a half-day job. I might be about four hours. I might have a full-day job. Most of my jobs at this point are things where I locate and leave my equipment at job sites. They don't stay ahead of us. My trailers, for the most part, I try to leave them at job sites, okay? Especially, you guys know how much gas costs today? I don't want to be troubling with this.
So, you need your hours of operation be between, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
Six, no, I mean, seven. Seven is fine.
And are you, and a question for the applicant, are you going back and forth to the property in the middle of the day?
No, there's one visit. I come there, I get my stuff, I leave, I come back home. If I come back home that night and drop stuff off.
Can we do hours of operation where we restrict it from, like, 6:00 to 8:00 AM? And then, like, if he's coming back that late, maybe we do, like, 6:00 to 7:30 PM? And he can only leave and come home between those, those hours of operation?
You certainly could do that. I would suggest not being quite that narrow.
I think that's being a little too stringent. I think if...
I just think that because, that's, that's a pretty unusual, that's a pretty wide hours of operation.
But then you're expecting him to, to mandate his business under those hours, and then there's too many other variables that come into a contracting business that are out of his control, that you're asking him to try to control.
Say seven to seven.
So, we're, and we're trying, trying to, again, put the stipulations in place to where it wouldn't be too early to what they're bringing up. 6:00 AM is a reasonable hour during the work week, right? Everybody's up, going to work, getting ready to go to work, so that wouldn't be bad. Saturdays, we could make that a little later, maybe. 7:00 on a Saturday. And then, a good time at night, especially because of the summertime, when that type of business, it's still daylight. So, the kids would be visible if he was back by no later than 7:00.
I think, I think... Excuse me, sorry. Can we please try to keep the volume to minimum? The, the issue, Bob, that I have with that, I understand that we don't want to restrict them too much with times, but we also need to accommodate a residential neighborhood where there's families. And, you know, we, they are operating a business out of their home, and I'm fully supportive of that, but they're also operating a business out of their home, where a lot, a lot of times, a landscaping business should, a lot of them are based off-site. And this is, this is a neighborhood that is uniquely built. It's not like they're on Highland or Thornel, where we live. They're, they're, they're on a cul-de-sac, and so I think we need to keep that in mind when we're constructing hours for a business, because if we're just going to have it be open season and he's coming in, he could come in, if we don't, if we keep the hours that wide, he could be coming in 10 times a day in a year. And I think that we need to listen to the neighborhood and try to be a little bit accommodative in terms of restricting it a bit so that their kids can play in the street and it's fine. I understand it's a public street, too, but, yeah, go ahead.
So, a suggestion is you could have wider hours of operation, like, I'm going to say 6:00 to 6:00, but limit that the trips be limited to no more than two per day.
I love that.
But who, who, I guess, who monitors that?
The planning board does not monitor anything. It is the code enforcer.
That's right.
The rules are all fine, as long as you comply with the rules. So, if you don't follow the rules, who monitors it? Who, who do you...
Okay. Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. So, I would, I let's, let's do, let's do our, let's do a wide hours of operation. We'll say 6:00 AM to, I'm going to say, I don't want, I wouldn't want trucks coming into my road at 8:00 PM, so I would say 7:30. And it's two trips a day.
Can I make one change?
Sure.
Saturdays?
Okay.
No operation on Sunday. Saturdays would be 8:00 to noon?
Yes.
Yes. Fine. Can you come to the podium?
This is really a temporary condition. I don't want to live in this neighborhood at all. I said it. Even if you guys give us a temporary arrangement for three months, or six months, or a year, we are actively looking.
Can we do that, Jen?
And I think we're out of here in less than six months. So, two, two trailers, and we have two equipment. If we get, let's say, excavator, mini-excavator, we are willing to give up the Kubota. It's just a temporary arrangement. We made a big mistake. We are going to leave. So, I can guarantee to you that I will not be in this area for six months. We lived in Topsfield, $2 million, $3 million home neighborhood. We didn't have to put up with this, okay? This is amazing. We, we thought we'd come up here to see more conservative, blue-collar worker. That's what I am, okay? I built three homes. I am a carpenter. I'm a finisher. We would have bent backwards to accommodate you guys, and I'm still doing it. So, no, I don't want to help be in this neighborhood, or even for this town. I, you know, my house was the inspection, how was my house inspected? That the garage does not have sheet rock. Where was the covenant? Where was the developer? Where, the town is lucky that there was no fire there, because the garage is not sheet rock. There is no fireproofing. So, the inspector that is retired is gone. He signed off. God bless him. The fire chief died. How was my, this house inspected? How did it pass inspection? So, I'm sorry, I'm not a happy camper, okay? How did you guys pass the, you know, how did my house pass fire inspection for what you might call it, for the sale? They gave us a certificate of occupancy because they checked the alarm. There is a big garage with no sheet rock in it. How is that possible? How were those rules, you know, where were you guys, you know, did you guys have builders? Covenant? The person? I'm sorry, this is, this has just become a complete joke. I'll be willing to sign with it. I'll be out of here in less than six months. Less than six months, all right? Four equipment. If we buy another one, the excavator, we give up the Kubota. That's simple. When I asked for building a garage in the back, the idea was not to grow. It was to shield it, okay? I'm multimillionaire. I can afford it. I don't have to put up with this. Thank you very much.
So, can we stipulate it expires after six months?
You can stipulate that you are only giving this approval for, I would do one year, if you're going to do at least ten.
Let's just do that.
Yep.
We'll add it for one year.
Okay.
Do you have any other?
I have no more comments, so, just to reiterate the conditions, with the exception of the boil-plate conditions... of the boilerplate conditions, hours of operation, and I'm gonna try to just cut this short. Monday through Friday was at seven to...
At 6:00 AM to 7:30 PM.
Six to 7:30.
Six to 7:30. No more than two trips a day. Saturdays was 8:30 to noon. No more than two trailers outside at any given time. The equipment will be stored inside the garage. Did I miss anything?
No.
The tra, the trailers should be shielded with natural...
Yes.
...screening from the marine properties.
I apologize for that. Thank you.
And located as presented in their application.
Thank you. And then our typical boilerplate information, and then in accordance with our regulations, no maintenance of the equipment onsite.
And it expires after a year?
Yes.
Yeah.
So after one year, if this moves forward again, or for whatever reason, the applicant would have to come back in front of the planning board for a home-based business. And somebody else has to make a motion.
I'll make a motion for all of that. And I'll second it. Discussion? Jim, do you want to call the roll? Sorry, it's not my role.
Well, I have one last thing if I may say this. Now, we accept all of these restrictions including one year. What I'm requesting are nice, you know, neighbors not to go to court to try to exercise the covenant because I will sue them back. They have five dogs. They're supposed to have two. They have... So what I'm saying, we accept the restrictions, but I would like to ask them also put some restrictions on it so we don't go to court.
I can't control any of that, so.
I would, I would call the roll.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can it, I'll call the roll.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
He said aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mashan?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, everybody, for speaking and coming. And I wish you luck on your business. So. And do we need a break? I'm guessing most of everybody's leaving, so.
We'll take a break just for two minutes, just so everyone can... That was good. That was good. Merry the weekend.
Yeah, oh...
Wedding was good. The wedding was good. Thank you for asking.
Okay.
Take care, guys.
Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, that was one of the conditions.
Have a good night.
Mr. Schrader?
Oh, pretty good.
Hopefully you, like, I know, planning board, I think, is giving a lot more credit than we're due because like, we don't control, just enforce. We wanted to make sure that you guys were heard.
So it'll be mailed this week.
Okay. I just, I, the...
You're telling me 30 days. But, but he gave him a six-month extension.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you, you did get an extension, but you're, it's getting into, so.
Nancy Wrigley would be able to help you with any...
Yeah, I, I just figured I'd ask that. Okay, thanks.
Just bring it. Nancy, Nancy will be able to... Okay.
All right. Take care. Have a good night.
That's the best I can help you with on that one.
Okay. Our hard, our hard stop is at what time? Nine?
If, yeah, if you want, at nine, you would have to, anything you haven't taken up, you'd have to open and then continue. But you can go later if you want.
Okay.
Oh, come on, Mark.
I have to get picked up tonight because we only have one car right now. I have an extra one. You want one? I said I have an extra one.
Okay. Now that's a little bit quieter.
Thank you for your patience, guys. Really appreciate it.
So our second item on the agenda tonight is for the American Tower of Woburn, Massachusetts, request a public hearing for a minor site plan, which is the addition of a new generator and pad at 85T South Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 13, Block 2, Lot 24T. Ms. Rotten, do you have any...
The application appears complete. It seems to qualify for a minor site plan. It is the epitome of a minor site plan, but I did need to get the planning board approval. I have no suggested conditions beyond your standard.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Thank you. It was Dan Guide.
Yeah, no, no, I, I was counting. There's somebody missing.
Oh. Mr. Piper is in the back.
He's right there.
Oh, okay.
Two Dan's sitting close.
He snuck out.
So you have a motion to take jurisdiction in a second.
We had a motion in a second to accept the number two.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
It's complete, Jim.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashan?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And Ms. Fuller, is Ms. Fuller here? Or is she on?
Actually, it's not Ms. Fuller. It's one of her associates.
Okay.
They're on Zoom.
On Zoom.
As American Tower Number One and American Tower Two.
Yes, hi, Kelly Simpson here.
Thank you. Do you want to just give a presentation on your application tonight?
So we're installing a, a shared generator on a concrete pad, eight by six. It's all enclosed. It's a 300-gallon self-containing generator, 80 kilowatts. And it, it only runs during emergency situations, and it's tested monthly to make sure that it functions properly.
Okay. Ms. Rotten, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Discussions for the board or the public?
I just asked that the, or the question is, for that monthly test, is it during normal business hours of nine to five? Like, it's not going off at 3:00 AM on Saturday? It's a question?
Yes. It's during normal business hours.
Awesome. Thank you. I would actually suggest that we put that as a condition.
There you go.
Jim or Ms. Rotten, do you have any, do you have a suggested set of conditions? Just all local?
That's the stand, that's the boilerplate.
Boilerplate with the addition of scheduled monthly generator tests shall be during normal business hours, Monday through Friday?
And Dennis, this is Barbara. They will also need to go to the building department to get the building and elec, building application and electric, get their permits.
Yeah, that would fall into your local permits required?
Yep.
But good to acknowledge.
So just those two?
Yeah, and, you know, by default, if there's the need, need for a permit or a sweat from DES, that they'll do that as well.
Yeah.
But that's under all federal and state permits.
Is that an additional condition?
No. I won't bog conditions down.
Good.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
This is Barbara. I have a second.
Mr. Guide, did you second it?
I did.
He beat you.
Okay.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashan?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Third for tonight. Munters of Amesbury, Massachusetts, request a public hearing for a change of use, adding an assembly at 9B Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lots 7, 27-4. Ms. Rotten?
Yeah, so they, the applicant has asked for one waiver request, which is effectively because they are asking for a, another minor site plan amendment, which, which normally on sites, you're only allowing one every three years. I think this is the third in the past year and a half or so because it's a multi-unit property, so it's not unusual. So I do think that the application does appear complete, assuming that you will be granting that waiver request, but it is complete because they have supplied the waiver request. A couple of just comments on the parking area that has been indicated. Just a little explanation why Unit B is taking up so much of the parking. That is just a, a general question as to why the need of so many parking spaces, so that there's sufficient parking for the other businesses. The other aspect to just want a little confirmation are the hours of operation, making sure they are compliant with these provisions of the site plan that have already been put in, which is the no truck traffic between 6:00 AM, I'm sorry, 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Just making sure that carries forth. And that is it. As just confirmation that there won't be any outside storage for public health, related to public health and safety.
Barbara, can you just go unmute? We're getting a little feedback too.
Sorry.
Thank you. And thank you, sorry.
Hi, my name is Doug Hittger. I'm the, excuse me, plant manager for Munters in Amesbury. This building is gonna be used as a warehouse facility and also for light assembly, off-the-shelf components. We build HVAC equipment and essentially low due point HVAC equipment. So no hazardous chemicals, no issues with no trucks between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. We pretty much operate normal business hours for trucking. There will be people inside the building from, anywhere from 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM, but for the most part, our normal shift operation is 6:00 to 4:30 PM, 6:00 AM to 4:30 PM. That, that would be our normal shift operation. As far as the parking, we got a question on the parking. We just asked for as many, as many spots that would be available per the lease. Typically, there's gonna be 10 to 12 people in the building. That's what we're starting with anyway. Could be up to 20 maximum, so I don't see anything beyond that at this point in time.
I did receive yesterday and didn't get a chance to send it out, somebody from Sergeant Woods sent an email supporting the applicant.
That's great to hear.
I have a question.
Sure.
I could be reading this wrong, but it appears we're losing some handicap space. Is there some type of remediation for that?
I don't think we have a... Yeah, I'm not sure we have a problem with, we can accommodate any handicap spaces that are required. If we have to, we can relocate them, I guess. No, not a problem.
That can be a condition of approval? Yeah, I mean, they have to to get their occupancy permit anyway, so. Just one other thing. Given the use that this entire building was originally approved for, just verification that there is adequate septic and water supply. That's, it's part of your standard condition, but just verification through the building department and DES that there is adequate provisions for those utilities?
Already on my conditions list.
We could, we could provide that.
Sure. I, I mean, you know, if this moves forward, we work through the building department and...
Yeah, I mean, that, that's gonna be required for any occupancy to ensure that the septic is gonna meet. And if, I don't think you're going to, but if for some reason they trigger public water supply criteria with, through DES, that'll get caught too.
Okay.
But just so you're aware, going, going into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, comments from the public. Sorry. Thanks, Mark.
Hi, my name's Nancy Kozlosky. I live at 3 Woodland Road. And I just have some questions. Although he did go over some of the questions, I'd like to ask him again.
Sure.
Okay, well, so you will still be keeping the Amesbury location? Well, I don't, I'm, you have to answer, but I have to ask.
I'm currently asking.
Okay. Okay, what will you be manufacturing in Newton? And is it the same as the things you're manufacturing in the Amesbury location? I would like to look at you, but they tell me I can't.
I mean, if you're comfortable. I don't know how this is.
We're, so we're, so I'll tell you, our biggest business and why we're booming and why we're expanding is we're, we're building low bo, low due point HVAC equipment. What that means is we build...
Dehumidifiers.
Dehumidifiers for the electric car factories. They're growing up all across the world. So we're all Tesla, GM, Ford, they're all building lithium battery factories. When you build a battery, there has to be, there can be no, no humidity in the air. We build a device that sucks the humidity out of the air. That's what we're building in Amesbury, and that's what we're gonna build here. We're exploding. We have no, nowhere else to go. We have nowhere else to go, so we're trying to find a spot to store some equipment and potentially build some small equipment.
Okay, so you have 22 employees in your Amesbury facility?
We have 300.
You have three. Your, some website is way off.
What we're gonna do, what we're gonna do in Puzzle Lane potentially is we're gonna basically make that our warehouse. We have no more place to keep any parts, essentially. They're just spare parts, filters, belts, all that stuff. And then we, to give you an example, we have a fabrication shop, a rotor shop. We have seven different assembly lines in Amesbury. We're talking about putting one assembly line in Newton, New Hampshire.
That will manufacture small parts rather than the big parts that you do in Amesbury?
It will be one equipment line as opposed to, like, for instance, in Amesbury, we're punching, bending, fabricating, welding. We're doing all kinds of other things in Amesbury. So we're not bringing that to this location.
So now...
The main, the main use is for a warehouse and then potential for a small assembly line.
So it leads me to your hours of operation, which you said are 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM with 10 to up to 20 employees. That's kind of a long period of time.
That would be, so the reason we asked for 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM is if we needed to run a second shift operation. Our normal, our normal, that's what I was saying, our normal business hours are 6:00 AM to 12:00. AM to 4:30 PM. But if we had to finish a job for a critical customer, we would bring in a second shift from Amesbury potentially to come in at night to finish a job that had to be shipped out the next day, for instance.
Okay, so you do have overtime?
We have overtime, yeah.
Is it mandatory?
No, we don't have mandatory overtime.
Some of your employees think you do.
No. We actually have a flex, we have a flex schedule with our employees.
I did read that. I don't know what it is. Okay, so this is, this is concerning to me. So I'm going to ask it. Will you be storing and using acetylene and nitrogen and oxygen tanks in Newton as you do in Amesbury?
What was the, I'm sorry, the...
Oxyacetylene.
Oxygen, acetylene. No, we wouldn't have any normal use for that. I mean, not at all, no.
Does you have a sign over one of your doors on your website that says that's stored?
So we do welding in Amesbury?
Okay.
That's why, yeah.
We consider them a green company.
Okay, so in your website, you show the big Bronco tractor trailer. Do you need all those extra spaces because you're going to take the Bronco tractor trailer and park it up here?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but on the website...
It's a big tractor.
Okay.
That says Denver Broncos. It's the...
Those are delivery trucks.
Okay, we do have delivery trucks. I mean, Amazon delivers, UPS.
Because you seem very proud on your website of this tractor trailer.
You know what, we probably built a piece of equipment for the Denver Broncos.
I actually happen to work next, right next door to Munters over in Amesbury, and those Bronco trucks that you're looking at probably get caught in the picture because they make...
Oh, no, it's featured.
They make deliveries to all those different companies in that area.
Okay, so no.
No, I don't think so, no.
Have you had complaints from your residential neighbors about noise or offensive odors in Amesbury?
I don't think so. Larry's our facility manager. Not that I know of. I've only been there since August of last year.
Okay.
Any noise complaints or offensive odor complaints from neighbors?
No, and we monitor all our air emissions and everything coming out of the facility.
Okay, because you have a residential home right across the street?
No.
That I can see in your website.
And we would do the same here if we need to, but...
I do know we feed our neighbor's cat. They come over all the time.
Okay, how much truck traffic do you anticipate coming in and out? And it would only be between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM?
Yeah, I mean, so I could tell you... 90% of our deliveries come from UPS and FedEx and Amazon.
Okay, well, the thing is, I don't want to hear the beep, 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 beep all day long.
Yep, I understand that. No, we don't, I don't think, we don't have any problem abiding by those truck times from 6:00 AM to, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Yeah, okay. So how many trucks do you think will be coming in in a day? Just give me a guesstimate. I won't hold you to it. How many trucks do you think that you will have between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM in a day? Give me a guesstimate.
Can we try to, we have people on Zoom that can't hear this as well, so...
I can give you, I can give you, so we have Munters vehicles. The question was, I guess, of how many trucks will be coming in and out a day. We have a Munters box truck. I'm going to say that's probably going to make two to four trips per day. And then there'll be typically UPS and FedEx show up around, I mean, in Amesbury anyway, they show up between 12:00 PM and 2:00 PM every day. Usually we get one of each. And then I'd say two or three other random deliveries per day, maybe. So on average, I don't know, six to eight, nine, 10.
Okay.
That would be my best guess, honestly. And the box truck is a small, like a U-Haul box truck.
So in Amesbury, it has been mentioned that it gets very hot inside your facilities. Do you plan on working with your loading dock doors open as well as your egress doors?
When you say, we don't have air conditioning inside the building, is that what you're...
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
And it gets hot.
It does get hot in the building.
So are you planning on leaving your loading dock doors open and your egress doors open?
If we needed to cool down our employees, absolutely. I mean, we would not want to work in unsafe conditions.
What do you plan on doing to mitigate the noise that will then come out of your building and annoy your residential neighbors?
Well, we could, we could talk about putting in some cooling systems, temporary cooling systems, but we don't really have anything that makes... No, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't hear it from across the parking lot. I mean, we literally run, they're large air conditioners, but I mean, you can't hear them from 100 feet away, and they're made, the systems that we make are made to run inside of buildings.
So you do have air conditioning or you don't have air conditioning?
No, we build air conditioners, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
But the air conditioners that we make...
But you don't have any?
No, we don't. That's the funny part, yeah. We actually don't have air conditioning in our workspace. It's the joke, I guess. We build the perfect climate, but we don't have one. We can't afford our own equipment, I guess.
So...
We try to accommodate, and obviously, if you had some issues, I'm sure we could try to help out. I mean, I don't think you're going to hear any noise out of us, honestly.
I really don't want to.
I, well, if you have any problems, you can come see me and I'll take care of it.
All right, so the last thing is on glass door reviews. You have had worker complaints that says you have safety issues in your Amesbury facility. Would you like to comment and how do you plan on remediating?
Excuse me?
I want to know how he would plan to remediate if he had safety issues in Newton.
Jen, do you want to...
So I just want to make sure, is the concern about if, I'm just, if they're, if they're safety for the employees or safety for things that may impact Newton and residents?
Both, because if there's safety issues within the facility that affect employees, they could consider, they could come out and affect nearby residents, the other parts of the building. I don't know the nature of the safety complaints.
I think if we could keep the answer to whether it would impact a butters?
Yeah, I mean...
We don't care, we're both...
I can, I don't have a problem, we can do it, honestly. We have a world-class safety record. I started August 23rd. We haven't had one injury since I've been there. The injuries that they have had are like carpal tunnel repetitive motion issues. I think we have had a slip and a trip in the parking lot on ice.
You can't help those.
Yeah, we don't have, we're pretty, safety is our number one priority, and that's on our code of conduct, so we care about our people.
They are, I saw that, I saw that. And you have facilities in Virginia and...
We do.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rick Garrenti. I live over at Sergeant Woods Development as well, and my question to, I'm sorry to... You're saying that you're possibly going to have light assembly? Did I get that right? The assembly of small pots and stuff, does this include any fabrication of the metal, you know, the metal duct, ductwork?
All the fabrication is done in Amesbury, so it'll just be...
So you're saying...
Can you just come up to the mic?
Come down to Newton?
No.
Come up to the mic.
Can you come up to the mic? Thank you.
So the light assembly that we're proposing is a picture and IKEA box. They're going to be getting a package of components and they're going to assemble them. And that's, that is the extent of it. All the fabrication is in Amesbury. It's very expensive to move it. We're not talking about doing that at this facility. Right, because the only thing I'm getting at is if you're dealing with fabricated ductwork.
Can you ask your question at the mic? Sorry, they can't hear you.
If you're using, if you're having ductwork come down to the Newton facility and getting with what she was saying as far as leaving the dock doors open, because I've used, I've been in warehouses before and it gets very warm in the summer, and you open the doors if you don't have AC. I get that, but if you're working with fabrication and you're out there at 6 o'clock in the morning or you're out there late because of an overtime situation for a customer, she's going to hear it, and I'm sure half the people over by my area, because I'm in the middle of the subdivision, I'm not as close as she is, but I will still hear it too.
Yeah, so we have all, all our equipment, which is multimillion dollar equipment, is in Amesbury, it's not moving out of that location.
So you're talking specifically light manufacturing, is that correct? And that's what it's zoned for, is that correct?
Yes, it is allowed. Actually, both are allowed, but light manufacturing is allowed.
Hello, Scott Rapucci from Two Seater Lane. Gotten a little confused. Do we have a picture of where this is going to be located? Is this a new building?
It's an existing building.
An existing structure and, you know, tax map 27B 325. Do we have, do you have, are there any pictures?
You have yours upright. It's basically an existing... Actually, the gentleman with the tie, Barry...
It's a building, it's, it's built, it's not going to...
Yeah, just to clarify, there's an application next on the agenda proposing new buildings, but this application is in a newly built, existing building.
So this is a building that exists right now that we're talking about?
Correct.
Over there?
Yep.
Can I ask about the, will I have to see the map? The new building is going to be right next to it?
The new buildings?
The, the application that's on next...
Next is discussing new buildings.
Yeah, but it's a separate lot.
So this is basically a... The reuse of an existing building, is...
On this one?
Yes.
We'll talk about the next one next.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. Do we have any more comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I be recognized from Zoom? I have my hand up.
Oh, I apologize. Go for it. Is it Roger?
This is, yeah, this is Roger Hamel from 17 Spruce. My questions are about the hours of operation. They, when this building was first approved back in 2015, the hours of operation were limited to 6:00 PM, I mean, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And now they're asking to go a bit later, and I'm, you know, again, I'm concerned about, you know, noise of the people leaving and wondering if that could be addressed.
So the original approval had the hours restricted to tractor trailers. It wasn't necessarily operation of the businesses within with sort of normal employee traffic?
No, Jen, that is, if, I pulled up the recorded plat, and on the plat, it says hours of operation shall be 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. There shall be no idling of vehicles on the site between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So it covers both, there were hours of operation and then there were also hours for the tractor trailers.
It has been a while, so...
Okay.
I will say with an amended site plan, though, you can change hours of operation, so...
Yeah, I realize they can be changed, and I'm just asking for some consideration to go back to what had been originally approved.
And it was 6:00 to 10:00 previously, and the applicant is asking for...
6:00 to 12:00.
5:00 AM to midnight?
5:00 to midnight?
Yeah.
Okay. And... Okay.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
Tom Lackborg, Building Extractors, agent for 125 Development. I think the spirit of that discussion there was for about trucks and trucking to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. No idling trucks, any of that nature, offloading, loading. So I think what they're asking for is to work inside the building. And we were talking, the building's designed with R40 ceilings, R30 walls. It's quiet, so I think for the minimum stuff they're doing, I think employees come and go, as long as they're not offloading or trucking. I think we should be able to withstand that. Thank you.
Okay.
So if that's the case, can we just add a stipulation that, I mean, if it's just employees, that's fine, but let's just like reiterate the tractor trailer?
You can certainly do that.
Deliveries between 8:00 and 5:00?
Well, yeah, or I would just say no trucks between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, whatever was said originally.
Right, 6:00 to 10:00.
Yeah, or 6:00 to 10:00.
I don't want to limit it to 8:00. I need to keep it at 7:00 because that's where all the rest of the whole park, and it'd be impossible to enforce it. I don't know how you would, because all the other businesses are running 7:00 AM. So if you're going to restrict one unit in a bunch of rows of buildings, you know, it kind of isn't fair, I think. I don't think that's what they're looking for. I think they're putting employees in the building early if they need to do rush work. Nobody's trucking any other time, so I think the limit of noise would be fine.
So you can carry the tractor, I don't want to interrupt. You can carry the tractor truck stipulation just forward as it was originally proposed and then allow employees?
Yeah, right.
For 5:00 to 12:00.
That's fine, okay. Thank you.
Can we limit the number of, the applicant stated that this is for a, I'll say one-off, which may be a week period of time, that the night work and addressing some of the residents' concerns and the previous condition, limit, I know it's extremely hard to enforce, but in the spirit of neighbors?
You, can you? Yes, is it hard to enforce? Yes.
Basically, where the applicant's statement was that it's potential second shift, but that's rare. Keep it similar to the previous condition with the exception of no more than two weeks in any given month, or is the factory operating or manufacturing in excess of, you know, the previous stipulation? Or is that too restrictive?
I think if you stipulate something like that, you're telling them how to do their business at certain times, and if it moves to this week, it might only be a week here, it might be three weeks, and then never again for six months. So I think you're, you're putting them in trouble and also putting, and also putting our code enforcement guy in the trouble because it's just, you know, I, I can't police it.
I understand.
And so I think, I think if you leave them for the internal work between the hours that are outside of our normal operating time that the park has...
Okay.
I think you'd be fine, and I, they're good fit guys. They're, they're extremely green, and I think it's a good fit for the town, so, and it's, the trucking is limited. I was trying to say earlier, too, the UPS and all the deliveries, Amazon, they seem to happen, they're all companies about four times a day, and they visit all different as they do the route, and that's really about to extend the traffic. Everything else is just regular business. Thank you.
I have no other comments.
So can we read all the stipulations we have so far? Do we have, have we been writing them down?
Would you like to take jurisdiction?
I'll make a nomination that we take jurisdiction.
Second.
I thought we took jurisdiction, but...
I think I recommended it. I think I recommended it, but you guys didn't do it. Sorry about that.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
That's unanimous.
Now, I'm also gonna make to take this with the stipulations of trucks with the, what was on there before, the 6:00 to 10:00 PM?
You have a waiver request that has to be considered before you can do conditional approval.
And that's just for the minor site plan, or the minor site plan, change of use within three years?
Right. Can, what do you need? It's recommended that you grant the waiver, it's. Yes, we, we need a motion to.
Motion to grant the waiver.
As written.
As written.
This is Barbara, I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Gil.
Aye.
And Mr. Mashon.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Guide.
It's all good.
Okay, now you can go on to do a conditional approval. But everything has to be done in order.
Yep, so we'll, I'll make a motion to approve with said conditions. No tractor trailers before 6:00 AM or after 10:00 PM, as originally stated. Business hours for regular employees, 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
12:00 AM?
Or 12:00 AM, yeah. We don't want it, yeah.
We're done.
Mr. Mashon, would you like me to read the list that I have? Yes, please, Jen. All services that are to be performed within the building. All hazardous or regulated substance on site be handled, stored, and disposed of consistent with local, state, and federal requirements. The hours of operation shall be 6:00 AM to.
No, that's.
No, 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM?
To 12:00.
5:00 to 12:00 AM.
5:00 to 12:00, okay. No idling of vehicles between 7:00 PM and 7:30 AM. No commercial retail space shall be offered without a new application approval by the planning board. No outdoor storage of business-related materials is permitted. Obtain all local, state, and federal land use permit, including but not limited to approval by the building and fire departments, and confirm that adequate septic facilities exist prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit.
I'd like to add, keep the same amount of handicap spaces that are there currently.
That's actually a requirement of.
Oh, okay.
Of the zoning.
That's good, it doesn't just reflect that, that's all. It's just X's everywhere.
So my motion goes with all of those. We have a second?
Second.
I did the call.
Okay. Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
Mr. Mashon.
Aye.
That is unanimous. And we have one remaining item on the agenda. You guys are done? I know we have to open it.
Yeah, so you do have to open it. It's up to the planning board if you want to at least hear about the application, to get an overview, but.
I would like to hear about it, I think that this is a really important thing that we need to spend time on and have fresh minds on, and I would advocate to make sure that it's heard at the next hearing a little bit more in depth. But that would, that's my position, and I just want to make sure that.
I would agree, I think there's a few things we can quickly discuss before actually getting into the details next hearing. But I think it would be beneficial for the applicant. Anybody else have any comments?
No.
Of course, I need my cheat sheet.
You need a motion to take authority on it.
At the top, it says worksheet four. Yep, here we go. So the fourth item on the agenda tonight is 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastile, New Hampshire, requesting a public hearing for a four-building condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 14, block 1, lot 27-3. Ms. Rowden, do you want to give a statement on the completeness of the application?
Sure, and the applicant's engineer has gotten a copy of my review letter that I just sent out today. Your town engineer has also provided a review letter a couple of days ago. I do not think this application is complete, I think there is some missing information that's outlined in my letter. There are a few variances that based on the proposal would need to be sought, approval from Plastile is required. There have been no waivers submitted, so either waivers need to be submitted or additional information needs to be supplied on a number of items. There are several items that your town engineer notes as well. And the condominium conversion, that would be sort of the second part of the application. Really, the board shouldn't take up until you've gotten through the site plan component of it. I know that was a lot, so.
So with that being said, do you want to?
I would, actually. At least to open it up, I, we know you're not gonna take jurisdiction tonight, which we don't have an issue with. We, before we go any further, my name's Barry Guyer, I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. We know there are a couple, a couple of items that we need to address to be complete and to, for the board to take jurisdiction. There are a couple of items that we would like to discuss with the board so that we can have as complete and ready-to-approve project as possible when we next meet. If the board would like to go through, you know, a quick presentation on what we're doing, maybe the future of the project as well, would be more than willing to do that tonight.
Do you guys want to wait until?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I just make a recommendation, if you're not gonna hear it? If the applicant could submit like a letter of intent to outline all of it, so you'll have it before the next meeting?
That was, I was gonna say, that would be helpful if you could take a look at the comments that Ms. Rowden and the town engineer provided, start moving that, the peer review process along. And a cover letter or just a, you know, a quick outline narrative to explain the project so we could at least come with some questions for you, like, based on our own input, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
So I'm asking for a motion to continue this hearing to the April 12th meeting?
Wait, is it April 5th or April 12th, because we mentioned April 5th earlier?
It is definitely not the 5th.
Okay, that's what I thought, I didn't see April 5th on my calendar, so.
Before we take a motion, were there, are, there's a couple of questions you had, was it just on your presentation?
No, I was gonna ask for specific items regarding a couple of the waivers that were, may or may not be required.
How many?
Well, the main one is regarding the length of the roadways. And my, and we have the original cul-de-sac that we're showing from Route 108 is about 1,955 linear feet. But we also have an emergency access to Howard Lane, which, you know, the, the requirements or the limit for the cul-de-sac or the dead end is 1,000 feet, so that would be a waiver. But typically, towns look at the emergency access as a looping of the road, so you don't need a waiver for that. So that would be one of the questions I had asked the board, would they look at that as one that doesn't require a waiver, one that does require a waiver? Do you want the emergency access, do you not want the emergency access?
So my recommendation would be to ask for the waiver for the cul-de-sac length and the emergency access that's been proposed may provide good justification for allowing it. That would be my recommendation for you.
So, yeah, I think we're kind of burned out for right now, for the night, so. I, I think it would be helpful to take a look at the comments that we provided, get an application that's a little bit more complete so we could take jurisdiction. And apparently I misspoke that we do not have a meeting on April 5th, but it's the 12th.
It is April 12th, yeah.
And a narrative explaining the project, you know, a couple paragraphs would be, would be helpful. Or, including some additional history, because I think Barbara is, Ms. White is the only one with substantial history on this project, with the exception of Jim.
Actually, I have a quick just comment for the board. This site has had a lot of proposals come before it with the planning board. This is a new proposal, treat it as a new proposal, because that's what it is.
Yeah.
But what's happened before kind of doesn't matter at this point, it is what it is.
Can I ask a question? Are we not taking jurisdiction?
I was, well, we had to make a motion to. To continue. To continue the hearing.
I think you're allowed to discuss the project, but without taking jurisdiction.
We did the last one.
I think just one observation is, have, have all the butters been notified?
Yes.
They have, yeah.
There's a lot of them, so, but.
There's a lot of them and I'm surprised if I have, how quiet the room is. So I, I think that's just something that I'm curious about, that's all.
So are we not supposed to vote and not take jurisdiction at this time and wait for, and ask for a continuance?
I would strongly recommend you not take jurisdiction because of the lack of information.
Right, yeah.
But you have to have the applicant agree to the continuance, which I think Barry effectively did a few minutes ago.
Absolutely.
And then you need to vote.
Okay.
So he agrees?
Yes, we agree to a continuance.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to not accept jurisdiction at this time.
I second that.
I'll second that motion, this is Barbara.
And roll. I'm gonna give it to Barbara this time.
That's fine. Barbara, I'm gonna let you have that one.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Ms. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
And Mr. Mashon.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Dennis, just for a butters, this will be the first case on the April 12th meeting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, so you don't have to hang around.
I know, sorry.
Do you have to vote to continue it? I know you voted not to take jurisdiction, just to be clear.
To the continuance, right.
Yeah, I, actually, I heard it as a motion to continue to April 12th.
Right, okay. Second.
Oh, no.
No, 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 that's what, that's what I heard the motion as.
Right, yeah, to continue what I said, right.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not, we're, we're not quite done.
I would love more information on this.
There hasn't been one.
Did you get?
Hey, Dennis, is there a motion to adjourn?
I was trying that, can I have a motion to adjourn, but?
Second.
Thank you.